Welcome to the City Council meeting for March 7, 2011. I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in singing "O Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you to Mr. David Bray for that rendition of "O Canada" and to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country. So we'd start the meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for those minutes? Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the City Council meeting held February 22, 2011 be adopted.
Thanks very much for that. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. councillor Wong, would you carry on with the adoption of the agenda?
Sure, I move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 8.2, the downtown BRZ budget.
Thank you very much. And councillor Rice, did you -- the adoption of the agenda with the additional item?
Shall I declare conflict just for that? Yeah, okay, I'll declare conflict.
Okay, so councillor Rice declares a conflict with the adoption of the agenda because of the added item. So we'll call for the vote on adopting the agenda with the addition of item 8.2, BRZ budget. Thank you. And that motion carries if we could call councillor Rice back. Thanks very much, councillor Wong. And so now is the time for the delegation portion of our agenda and we have an opportunity for members of the public to address council. We did have a few folks who had let us know ahead of time that they'd like to make a presentation and so first I would like to invite forward Ms. Perjanka. We have a presentation that we'd like to make. Come on forward.
Come forward.
Sure, just come on forward and have a seat and I'll tell everybody who you are and why you're here.
So annually, the City of Grand Prairie awards a Dave Gorle bursary to a student that's attending at GPRC and it's our pleasure today to be able to present this award to you, Kirsten, and with our congratulations. Dave Gorle was a longtime member of the City of Grand Prairie team and it's in his honor that we make this award. The award goes to further the educational pursuits of a family member of a City of Grand Prairie employee and so we certainly appreciate the work that you're doing at school and we're happy to help support you in that. Come forward and I believe we have -- I think they're trying to -- since we lost our main logo, I think they're trying to get another city logo up on the screens and we'll come forward and take a picture.
Thanks very much and congratulations, Kirsten. Next, we had a delegation from the Downtown Association that wanted to make a presentation. Councillor Rice?
I'll declare conflict later.
Thank you very much. Councillor Rice declares a conflict of interest and has left the council chambers. Mr. Freezen, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Harold Freezen. I'm the Chair of the Downtown Association. Mayor Given, councillors, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'm here to present the Downtown Association budget, which I think you all have a copy of. Our budget was sent to all Downtown Association members about at the beginning of February. As far as I'm -- as far as I know, there were no concerns about it. It was also presented at our AGM on February 23 and there were no concerns expressed then and it passed unanimously. What we've tried to do with this budget is keep it basically even with last year's. We have a little increase of 2% to account for items that unfortunately year-to-year increase, such as rent, flower baskets, et cetera. So -- and unfortunately, we never know whether it's going to increase or in fact decrease until the city crunches their numbers on this. So does anybody have any questions about it?
Were there any questions for Mr. Freezen? Well, you've answered everything, obviously. Oh, I see councillor McLennan.
Hey, Mayor Given. I just want to say--
Sorry councillor McLennan, you'll have to turn your microphone on. You went on and off there.
Sorry, Mayor Given. I sit on the Downtown Association Committee now and I'm amazed just how much is involved. I always knew before I became councillor, the parades and the street performers, there's so much that goes on down there. I just want to commend the work that everybody's done there for many, many years. So just want to thank you for coming forward.
And I'll thank you on their behalf.
Thanks very much councillor McLennan. Councillor Redmer?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Good evening, Harold. My question is, in terms of the operational budget, if there is surplus, if there -- you don't expend all of the revenue you get, is there something that you're saving for? Is there a capital project? Is there something that is on -- is in the works and something you'd like to see happen downtown?
There are actually a couple of projects that we have been attempting to see into our budget and we haven't been able to do that yet. One of them is -- and in fact, we even put the banners on hold this year to keep our budget at an even keel. The banners, we've had a lot of trouble in the past with tearing because of the wind we have. And we've tried a variety of things and the only thing that, from what we understand works, are some brackets that actually give in the wind. Ours right now break in the wind, which isn't great. Fortunately, nobody's been hit by them. So we've been saving for those. Unfortunately, if my memory serves me correctly, they are in the ballpark of about $60,000 for those brackets. So yes, we would love to have enough money to do that.
Thank you.
I see councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Harold, if you get requests or do you get requests, we have some valuable vacant land downtown. If you got requests, would you pass them on to like the city mayor or would somebody just sit down with you and discuss that?
Oh, absolutely. We are always -- we always have our ears open and there's 400 sort of pairs of ears always listening to see if anybody has any ideas or knows somebody who would like to develop some land, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, many ears and--
Absolutely, for sure.
Feet on the ground too.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions for Harold? No, seeing none, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Freezen, appreciate being here tonight. We'll deal with your agenda item, it's the first ones we get into our regular business. And so we also had Mr. Norm Dick said that he wanted to come forward and make a presentation with regards to recycling issues, I think. And we'll -- if we can call councillor Rice back in as well.
Yeah, my presentation is very short. Margaret's going to do the presentation behalf. It's regarding Aquiterra.
Sure, just have a seat and introduce yourselves, folks.
Thank you, Mayor, welcome. Mayor.
Given and council members. We were here before the last fall speaking about the curbside recycling program. We see some shortfalls in it, as announced in the paper. We've done some homework, checked, I've been down to the Aquiterra facility. I am pleased to announce to see what they are doing down at the landfill site. They're doing their best with what policy they have in place. We've also done some research online for what other cities are doing in terms of recycling. I was here last November, I think it was, and I had a number of tools in front of me, which I think should be -- they contain copper, metal, aluminum, various metals and these things, we can't get into a recycling program because there aren't collection sites available. When we had the recent thaw, I discovered I had another problem. And all households have these things. That's my sump pump. There's a lot of copper in there. I was just to the recycle eco center today with that. It's garbage, put in the garbage, that's what I was told. There is no program for that. We see a need for streamlining non-reparable and non-serviceable household items and kept out of the landfill. Aquiterra's eco center will not accept these. I've listed them and maybe Margaret could hand out the copies for you members too. Things like electric appliances, can owners' knives, aluminum frying pans, paper fritters, mixed masts, bread machines, et cetera, aluminum pots, broken kitchen utensils, aluminum step ladder, aluminum golf clubs, stepping stools, medals and lawn chairs, inoperative rain boots, rusted out barbecues, old satellite dishes, rusted out taps, sump pumps, battered aluminum screen doors, metal frames, et cetera, mangled bicycles. No, copper, I've just recently gone online. Copper, a component of many home appliances, has risen 30% in the past year to $4.50 per pound. Rising energy costs and what we need to recognize as a finite supply of metallic ores found in earth's crust dictates that there be a policy change for this city in what is deemed as garbage. It is not acceptable that we continue to discard valuable metals into our landfill for decades, metals that require precious and costly energy to mine. Aquiterra's motto, we are reminded, is water, earth, and innovation. This need identified calls for an innovative policy while Aquiterra moves to curbside recycling. Dumping this stuff in the landfill is not innovative. Thank you for hearing my remarks and Margaret has some comments in regards to glass.
Sure, please.
Yes, we -- November, the Herald Tribune, it's November 30. And it says here, "The new program will accept everything the depots did except for long time used plastic bags and glass." And it was really interesting going on the internet. There's a recycling company waste paper products with Graze Recycling Limited in Edmonton. They have a really, I think, exciting thing happening with glass. They crush it and they make blocks out of it. And these blocks are used in paving the roads. They look like a concrete block and the presence -- in the presence of sunlight, this coating, they put a coating on it, acts as a catalyst to transform the pollutants like nitrous oxide from car exhaust into nitrates that are not harmful to the environment. And tests showed that these air cleaning blocks can remove 20% of the pollutants. It's really interesting. It also -- I've got some handouts for you and I would recommend that you look this page up. It's really interesting. For one, a recycled bottle is a power -- you can get the power of a 60-watt bulb for 100 minutes. You know, it goes on, there's a whole slug of stuff. And I don't think -- this fellow who is there, he's very knowledgeable. He figures, I think he said within three months, he could have something up and working up here. Any area that has a 50,000 population, it's a viable place to come. Because we all use about 330 glass products each. And that's another thing, like we rinse these dumb things out, you know. I mean, that's a waste of water for one, if it's just going to get dumped. Anyway, I would really like to see something done about it because I do think Aquiterra has a responsibility. That's what they're all about. And I know they were going to give some -- a lot more money to their people they've got on the board so maybe it gets a little -- a few more hours out of them. They could look this up and develop something. Thank you very much.
You said that you had some documents that you wanted to hand around?
Yeah, I've got a few.
Would you like to do that now?
I will do that right now.
While Margaret is handing out the information, one of the council members, the man being Dan Wong, asked if I had talked to my MLA about there's no requirement for these electronic household gadgets to be recycled. So I sent a note off to Mr. Drysdale. He responded and said, "Well, you can check out some of the repair places in town or you could go to some of the metal places." But I refused to get in my vehicle, to take a few of my products, to go to metal recycling. We need everybody to get on these kind of programs. There's an awful lot of steel, copper, and aluminum that's going into the garbage. That shouldn't be. So we need a -- I spoke to Mr. Mans today on -- with Aquiterra and he said that is an area that we may have to consider looking at. So I would urge you to consider, to have him consider the city looking at recycling this stuff with valuable metals that are -- we're just burning it, it's not responsible. So thank you, Mayor Given. Sorry to have taken as much time as we did. And I promise not to bring any more garbage anymore.
Well, no problem. You're always welcome. I would ask though, if there are any questions for the delegation? Do any council members have any questions? I see councillor Wong is in the queue.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Norm, I just wanted to let you know that recycling obviously is one of those programs that continually evolves and in the future, we might see the ability to collect things like that, broken motors and composite metal items like frying pans. I had to throw out a couple myself earlier this year and it's really distressing because it's a lot of metal. In terms of glass and plastic bags though, there actually has been no decision by Aquiterra to discontinue accepting them. They just won't do it curbside. That was -- that's what we were told. Plastic bags I know are still going to be accepted at grocery stores so you can recycle them there as you go into the grocery store. And glass, they're still going to take at the depots or at the eco center.
But it's -- what's going with that?
Well, they're not sure yet. They are just stockpiling it for now so it doesn't actually end up in the landfill. It's just when they get to a certain point, they warned us that they may have to start landfilling it because you run out of room to stockpile after some time, unless they do find an alternative, like if they could ship it off to a place like this and--
Well, sorry.
Yeah.
As that article mentioned, that market just--
Mr. Dick, do you want to -- sorry, can I just ask you maybe to sit down?
That's the City of Edmonton that does that and it's the Graze Paper Recycling and they actually make those pavers out of it. They use fly ash, cement, and glass. I forget what complexion color it is, but it's added to it and they coat it with titanium oxide, put it in the streets, the pavement, and it also absorbs some of the nitrous oxide that are there. So it's a small -- we've got the pavers all over the city here. They're identical, you'll see the sheet that Margaret handed there.
Yeah.
It's completely manufactured here.
Yeah, rest assured that if there is an option for the glass, we're going to explore the option before we start landfilling glass.
Thank you very much, councillor Rice.
Okay, thanks very much for your presentation. I don't see any further questions. Councillor Rice? You're going to want to either ring in so I can turn on your microphone or you're going to have to do it yourself?
Okay. Graze, you cabled this information with Mr. Mans of Aquiterra regarding--
I gave him the phone number. I don't -- I did not give him that information.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much, Norm, for coming down and for not leaving that here with us. Appreciate that too. So now is the -- also an opportunity for anybody in the community that wanted to come forward and address council on any community issue or any issue that's on our agenda, other than those which would be the matter of a public hearing. Was there anybody that'd like to come forward to address council on any issue? Call one more time to see if there's anybody else that wanted to come forward? Sure, come on up. Introduce yourself for the city clerk and say hello.
My name's Sean Fugelberg. I'm a board member with the Grand Prairie Gymnastics Club and I'd like to say good evening, Mayor Given, and to councillors. I'd just like to make a small note here. I would like to ask council to reject the city administration's recommendation to deny our request and to keep the talks open with the Grand Prairie Gymnics Club to keep -- to come up with a strategy to remedy the situation. We had a very good meeting with the city council last Monday night and it is our hope to keep the line of communications open.
Okay, thanks. And this is in regards to the item that's later on in our agenda with regards to gymnastics funding. Were there any questions for Mr. Fugelberg? Councillor Redmer?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Good evening. So can you tell me what you would like?
Well--
If the money isn't going to be made available, if, what alternative are you suggesting?
At this moment, as a board, we haven't had a chance to have a meeting to come up with any solutions that we might be able to share with you. So at this time, I decline any.
So in essence, you're asking us to table?
Yes.
Is that what you would like?
Yes, if you would just table that till we can have a proper meeting and hope to work together to reconcile what differences we have.
Thank you.
Okay, I see some other questions. So councillor McLennan?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Sean, question I have is, when you built that building, you would have been on track for being built in price range, but it hit at the beginning of the boom. You guys raised, what, $4 million out of $6 million in the final to build that building?
Yes. Right now, I'm not in a very good situation to discuss any financials. So I was -- would hope to, if we could come up with or talk about other questions.
Okay, the only question I have, I don't know if it's -- is, I guess you can't -- this won't be delayed, we're voting on this tonight, are we?
Yeah, it's going to come up on our agenda later.
Okay, so I want to ask, we haven't got the answer, so it's up there. Hopefully, there's a plan down the road, say if it did pass tonight or didn't pass or whatever. That won't be every year this is coming forward. Somehow this can be resolved down the road. So anyways, all I have is--
I'm sorry I can't help you with all your questions. I became the spokesman and I don't have all the information.
Okay, okay. Were there any further questions for the delegation? No, seeing none, I think you did a pretty decent job as the spokesman. Thanks very much for your presentation there, Sean. Was there anybody else that wanted to come forward to address council on any community issue? Our final time, is there anybody else that want to come forward to address council on any issue? Seeing none, then we'll move forward with our agenda and we'll move on. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business. So we'll move on to the reports section of our agenda. I see councillor Rice. Councillor Rice is getting her exercise tonight. She declares a conflict of interest and has left the council chambers for the discussion of our next items. So the first item is item 8.1, appointments to the downtown BRZ Board of Directors. We have a recommendation in our package and is there somebody that would like to make the motion contained there? Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council reappoint Harold Freezen, Rick Fleeger, and Danielle Cherwick for three-year appointments to expire in 2014 to the downtown BRZ Board of Directors.
Thanks very much, councillor Wong. Was there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries and we have one further item of business under reports. Councillor Wong?
Yes, I'll move the downtown BRZ budget for 2011. I move that city council adopt the budget as presented. And in speaking to that, Mayor Given, the budget shows the association membership fees. That's a membership fee that is collected by the city from the downtown businesses and turned over to the downtown association for their operations. If there were any objections to the budget figures, they would have heard it at their association meeting.
And just in addition to that, it has gone through the committee process as well and then here tonight. So was there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Can we call back in councillor Rice? And that brings us into the committee business portion of our agenda and I think the first committee, welcome back councillor Rice, is actually yours, the 100th Anniversary Committee from February 15. Councillor Rice?
Okay, I move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held February 15, 2011.
Thanks very much for -- did anybody spot any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Rice, was there anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
I did, actually. The excitement in the community for the city's 100th anniversary is very high. As you can see, we had nearly 25 people at the last meeting because it's very difficult to accomplish anything with that large a group. We have split the committee into various subcommittees and so chairing the homecoming portion of it is councillor Gustafson and Assistant Vice Chair Janet Longmait. Charing the events, because we want to have 100 days of events, is councillor O'Toole and he'll also be working with various committee members. And chairing the -- the history book is Julie McLennan. She is one of the public members. Charing promotions is Randy Pike, one of the committee members, and Dawn Streper as vice chair. It was decided that the central committee appointed by council would remain as the fundraising financial committee so that we always have good control of that. So it's rather exciting to see at this point the number of projects that are going to be undertaken in the community and we will be coming to a future General Government Services Committee meeting, I think. I'm not sure if it's General Government Services or CDC to talk about the potential for applying for a cultural capitals designation. So it's, like you said, a long way out, it seems like, but we've got a lot happening and it's very exciting.
Many hands makes light work, right?
Yes.
Thanks very much for that update, councillor Rice. And we'll move on to item 9.2, the Public Works Committee from February 22. Councillor Wong?
I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held February 22, 2011.
Thanks very much. Did anybody spot any errors or omissions in those minutes? I see councillor Monroy.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a correction here, I was in attendance at that meeting and not listed on the agenda there.
Okay, thanks. So we have -- So we have one council member who spotted the -- So we have, so we have one council member who spotted the, just something, catch in attendance, so we'll make sure that that is amended, and so maybe, I guess the motion would be to adopt those minutes as amended, with that change. Okay, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Wong?
I move that council approve, approve a request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application Z 2008-0024, property Northwest 11-71-6 West of the 6th, and Plan 962-0256, Lot 1. Lot 1, Lot 1, or, sorry, I just lost my place there. Lot 1 for one year to expire on February 3rd, 2012, and in speaking to this, it is a, it's a time request extension for Stonebridge Commercial, which is just south of 68th Avenue. Their original application was 2009, set to expire in 2010. The subdivision approval authority extended, losing my microphone here, extended the application from 2010 to 2011, and now they're, they've asked for an additional extension. This is a typical request if things with the economy go bad, or if they, they suffer any kind of delays. Given the, the recent recession in the economy, it's not unusual for a request like this to come forward. Typically, council would grant an additional one-year extension.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries, and 9.2.2, councillor Wong?
Yes, I move that council appoint Ms. Dee Creighton as a development authority to exercise development powers and duties on behalf of the city in accordance with the land use bylaw C-1100. And in speaking to this, Ms. Creighton recently finished her course on development authority, so now she's able to join Rhonda and Val in, in approving developments. I think that, you know, this is one department that can use as much staff as possible. I know we were short in the recent boom, and we had a hard time filling those positions, so it's nice that an internal staff member was able to get their accreditation.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion does carry. And councillor Wong, was there anything else from that Public Works Committee meeting that you wanted to highlight for us?
No, thank you very much, Mayor Given, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Sure. Questions for councillor Wong? Councillor Rice, do you have a question?
I do. I have a question. I noted that the committee had talked about contacting the landowners located in the long-term annexation area to allow them to express interest in joining the present annexation process. There must be some rules about, like, they can't leapfrog, like, if one guy out and this guy here doesn't want to. So it's not just, anybody in the long-term area can join up, is that correct?
Absolutely. The, the properties have to be continuous with where the city boundaries are right now.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's to Alderman Wong, or perhaps Mr. DeScavitch. The province has announced that it will no longer be funding the municipal infrastructure management system, or MIMS. It's no longer going to fund that, that they won't be contracting with Sierra Systems anymore, and Sierra Systems is not prepared to take it over. At one point, AUMA had looked at developing this as a business, but the government said, no, no, we're, we're on to it, we're on to it. Having done that, they've now abandoned it, or, or cut back on funding it, let me say that. Is, is that not something we use, and if so, how is that going to affect us?
Probably best for Mr. DeScavitch, I'd imagine. Mr. DeScavitch, could you answer that for us?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We don't use it extensively, and we're going to analyze what the impact will be. Everything going basically through the MSI now has changed things, and the, the main thing we use for infrastructure is on the roadways, our pavement management system.
Okay, thank you.
So is this something, then, that we'll see come back to committee if there are any impacts to the city process or extra expense?
Mayor Given, yes, we would bring it either way, whether it impacts us or doesn't.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks councillor Rice for raising that, and councillor Rice, I think you're actually next on the agenda with general government services committee meeting.
Okay. I move that council receive the minutes of the general government services committee meeting held February 23rd, 2011.
Okay, thanks very much. Any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Please carry on councillor Rice.
I move that council authorize the release of $500,000 for the River of Death and Discovery Dinosaur Museum as budgeted in the 2011 budget. This is a budgeted item.
Okay, and the first of the city's $1.5 million commitment, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? I see councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be voting against this motion. I'm not against tourism, I'm not against children finding out where these beautiful beasts came from 200 million years ago, but at this time, I, we need 14 more RCMP officers. We need more civilian administration time with the RCMP. We need, do need replacement firefighters as it goes along. We need another ice surface. We need to upgrade our snow removal. We need an aggressive pothole and road repair. Those are immediate things in the city of Grand Prairie. We also need to find revenue from Aqua Terra moving out of the city. That's a, a large item, and also losing the, the dollars from the county of Grand Prairie on our fire services. So that, those are a lot of the reasons why I won't be supporting the motion, your worship, dear mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. I see councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion, because previous council on this issue said to the county, we will support this, but I believe wholeheartedly with councillor Don Crokin on this issue. And so for future developments, I see, I, I will say yes to this, but I'm looking forward down the road of what we owe.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries with two opposed. And 9.3.2, councillor Rice?
I move that council approve the revised health and safety policy, number 403, as presented. The health and safety policy is to ensure a healthy and safe work environment for all workers. It's also to comply with Occupational Health and Safety Act, the regulations and code, and also to comply with the Workers' Compensation Act and regulations.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Rice. Were there any questions for councillor Rice on that agenda item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I think I'm missing one still.
Oh.
Thank you very much. That motion carries.
I move that council receive the health and safety internal audit 2010 report for information. We have several employees that have taken the training, qualified to conduct the safe health and safety internal audit, and we thank them for the time they spend.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Radburn, I see you with a question?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a comment, just to compliment what Alderman, or councillor Rice had said. I believe the, the internal audit showed that we scored a kind of a 92, passes 80, and I think, so I want to also commend staff for this initiative, and I think it's a, a good preparation for the external audit happening this year. So I think that it's good that we have, we look at ourselves, we reflect on what we're doing prior to the external audit, so I would also congratulate staff for this, this initiative.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And councillor Rice, I believe we dealt with 9.3.4 earlier in the agenda, and so that item is off. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight?
No, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, any questions for councillor Rice on that general government services committee meeting? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the protective services committee, and councillor Radburn, I believe that was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the protective services committee meeting held March 1st, 2011.
Thanks very much. Were there any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Please carry on councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the RCMP municipal support staff report for information. This was a report presented to us that was useful to committee, because it outlined the significant roles that our, our support staff at the, with our police force, the important role they play, and the support they play at various points in investigations and, and when things go to court. It was, I guess, preparatory to, to a possible ask at budget time, although that certainly wasn't their stated objective this past time, but it was useful information to give committee, I guess, a better understanding of the role that the support staff play in the operations of our police force. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. So we have that motion on the floor. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn, I think you have one more off that agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the allocation of $60,000, $60,016.93 in matching funding from the fire department equipment replacement reserve for the joint emergency preparedness grant program. In speaking to this, all of council did receive a report after our committee meeting, so you have this background, but I'll highlight some of the report for, for those listening and watching. In 2009, we'd, the city applied for this grant. It was declined at the time. Recently, we've been notified that funds are available, so a motion approving matching funds from the fire department equipment replacement reserve will enable us to leverage some grant monies, with monies that we put aside to, to make this project happen. The funds will be used to purchase smart boards and computer desks, inclusive with computers. This technology will be used for emergency operations center purposes by the fire department for training purposes, and by various sectors of the organization for computer-based training. So this is, was part of the vision for that fire hall, and this sudden availability of monies, I guess, has put us in a position where if we can support using the reserve monies, that was, were put away for this, this type of thing, so that we can take advantage of this opportunity, and we can have a training center with our emergency preparer center at the fire hall, and that can be used by all of city, and indeed, regional partners, community partners as well. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I see councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I voted against this at a previous committee meeting, and I'll be voting for it tonight, because there's a lot on the reserve funding that I have to learn a lot more, but I'm looking to see how money is allocated in the near future, and how we can look at things quite closely after this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Was there anything else councillor Radburn from that set of minutes?
Just a couple of things, Mayor Given. We did have, receive a kind of an update, delegation report from EMS. We did receive from Alberta Health Services Party Program, an update, and both were, were quite informative. We gave administration some direction with respect to a rewrite of the animal control bylaw. It had a number of components that we discussed and provided some direction that will be coming back to, back to committee and ultimately council in the future. And we did look at noise and nuisance and public disturbance by law, and there are some components there that we have decided to wait and look at, look at these things at a later date, particularly with respect to noise of vehicles and motorcycles. Edmonton is doing a lot of work, and there are some number of legal challenges involved, so we don't want to enter into something until we know what we're dealing with. Noise outside licensed establishments is another something that will be come back to us at some point, because we're now, the industry is working with administration to look at how we can address those kind of concerns. So at, at the end of the day, those will be looked at at a later time. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much councillor Radburn. So we'll move on to the community development committee for March 1st. I believe councillor Gustafson, that was your meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the community development meeting held March 1st, with the correction of adding councillor Kevin McLean to the, to the present list.
Okay, thanks very much. So there was one item in those minutes, and so maybe just adopt them as amended, with that amendment. Any further discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. One more I'm looking for. Thank you. That motion carries. Please carry on councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the Grand Prairie Model Racer Association one-year lease agreement renewal.
Sure. Do you want to introduce that or speak to it?
Sure, yes, the Grand Prairie Model Racer Association have that, leased that chunk of property connected right beside the dog park on the south end of Grand Prairie on the way into the Ball Diamonds, and we've extended their lease for another year with very minor changes, just with the noise. There's a few neighbors around the neighborhood complaining about the loudspeaker and the fast racing cars around their track there, so I encourage council to vote in favor of this motion.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I see councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Councillor Gustafson, the question I have is for the, the model racers, can they come like next year after this year's over, and they have to do this every year, or is there going to be like where they can have a five-year lease or something like that, so they don't have to come all the time, and, and I'm just wondering if that's in the forecast in the future for these individuals?
Sure. Councillor Gustafson, so the, the question is, at this point, it's a one-year lease, is there any discussion, or was there any discussion about moving to a longer-term lease? Councillor Gustafson?
It's a year-to-year with...
Sorry, can you turn your microphone on? It's ringing in.
Thank you, Mayor Given. It's a year-to-year auto-renewing lease, so it's, it's basically a long-term lease. However, it has to be resigned every year with automatic, automatic renewal, I believe. Is, is there a better way to explain it, or?
I wonder if the director of community services would like to help out with that? Ms. Ketchard?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. Administration will continue to work very closely with the Model Racers Association to deal with any concerns that come forward, if there are any, and that certainly was the intention all along, that we continue to do that.
Okay. So James, the, the intent then to do this one-year term, see how that works out for the neighborhood, and then bring it back and consider a long-term after this sort of one-year trial? Would that be fair to say?
Thanks, Mayor Given, yes, that would be in a correct assessment.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the affordable housing master plan.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Rice?
So once we adopt the plan, then I assume it goes back to administration to come forward with an implementation schedule?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve the 2011 through 2014 Community Plan on Homelessness Report for Submission to Service Canada.
Okay. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, oh, councillor Radburn?
Just a comment, Mayor Given. This plan was developed with a, a committee of community, and it is a requirement so that we can access over $800,000 of federal money over the next three years, so in that sense, so it is not only important to the community, but important so that we can access those funds.
Okay, thanks very much for that councillor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Councillor Gustafson, oh, you've still got a few left on your list there.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move number one, that council award tender number T-0643411 for the Coca-Cola Center Mezzanine renovations to T-West Construction Limited, in the amount of $401,831 excluding GST, and support the request to extend the deadline to October 31st, 2011, for the Coca-Cola Center upgrade project under the recreational infrastructure Canada Rink Program, and further approve the city commit to complete the Coca-Cola Center Mezzanine renovations upgrade project by October 31st, 2011, and accept full responsibility for any costs incurred beyond October 31st, 2011.
Okay.
Is there any questions on that?
I see councillor Rice in the queue?
Yeah, I have, I, just a bit... Yeah, I have just a bit of confusion. First of all, I thought we, we used requests for proposals as opposed to tenders primarily. I'm, I'm just uncertain as to why you used a tender in this particular case.
I wonder if that's maybe appropriate for our Director of Corporate Services, Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Gibbon, for construction projects, we always use a tender. There's only when there's some latitude of design in it that we would go to an RFP.
Thank you. And I don't understand two and three and what that means. I, I thought we just entered a tender, just awarded a tender, and then we're putting it on hold or something.
Sure, I think the Director of Community Services might like to speak to that. Ms. Kaddashar?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. Yes, these funds are tied to the Rink Grant that we have received from the federal government, and in order for us to ensure that we don't lose any of those dollars, we asked for the extension, and the extension had to be approved by council.
So it's essentially the, the $400,000 or a portion of the $400,000 is coming from federal money that has to be expended by a certain time?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Yes, it was supposed to be expended, I believe, by the end of March, and we're not going to make that deadline.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, any further discussion? We've got a few in the queue. I see Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Counselor Augustus or to Jane? The question I have for is on number three about after a certain date, will be held for any incurred debt or extra monies. Why wasn't that included in the contract with the person that is going to be doing this, that they incur that debt?
Ms. Kaddashar?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I believe that's a stipulation of the federal government, that we have to insist upon that or that has to be part of council's commitment to the project and to the dollars.
Any further discussion? I see Counselor Monroe, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. I guess this question is geared towards Jane as well. What is the projected timeline of completion for the renovations upgrade?
Ms. Kaddashar?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. Certainly will be before October 31st. Approval tonight will be moving forward on this very, very quickly in order to ensure that that is not an issue.
But is there a, a projection date of completion? Like is it June, July, August?
Ms. Kaddashar?
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. I don't have the exact date, but I'll certainly find that out and email that answer to all of council.
I do recall from the meeting that administration mentioned July, I believe, so I think they've set us with a fairly good range of latitude, but certainly administration can get that information, get it back to council for circulation later.
Okay, so just for follow-up, I'm assuming that there's a very low risk that we would not be completed come October 31st.
Ms. Kaddashar?
Yes, Mayor Gibbon, that would be correct.
Okay, thanks very much. And Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I will be certainly supporting this motion. This is grant monies from, as you know, from Recreation Infrastructure Canada, and we are complementing or supplementing those funds with some monies from our Facility Renewal Fund. The reason I'm supporting this is because I think this is an, truly an investment. It is staff's belief that this will certainly attract users and use of this facility and generate more revenues for that facility. With this investment, more revenues means hopefully less subsidization of that facility, which I think is win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Counselor Augustus?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I'll move that council deny the Grand Prairie Gymnics Society request to forgive the interest on the $1.6 million loan in the amount of $338,555.80 Canadian.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
I would move that this issue be tabled for a period of three months to allow the gymnics an opportunity to come forward with alternatives.
Okay, and so Counselor Rice, would that be tabled to the council meeting three months from now or to?
To, to a Community Development Committee meeting.
Okay, so actually referred?
Yeah, referred to committee, okay.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion to refer this item to the Community Development Committee. We'll have discussion and debate on the motion to refer. Counselor Redburn?
That was the motion that I was going to make. I think as we've listened tonight, there is a genuine interest in the gymnics to continue to work with this study and look for, I guess, opportunities to work together, other than maybe the one that's put as part of the motion tonight. So I think we need our community partners, give our committee partners time to look at it and work with city before, before we deal with this particular motion.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Counselor Wong?
Yes, I'm also going to support this motion. I think that there are other opportunities that could be explored. I know that there isn't really the appetite to forgive the interest outright, but I know that with the agreement with the Swan City Rotary Lotteries, the gymnics are covered for the, for the entire 1.6 million amount. They, they aren't covered for the interest, but there is a possibility of maybe stretching out those interest payments to make it feasible for them to absorb it into their operational costs, and that, that wasn't really discussed, and that's something that we could look at doing in the future.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I look forward to saying yes to this because I believe it's such an important issue in our community, and just saying that, this is an, this is an area that they raised a lot of money for this building and got it built, and it's a huge asset to our city. So I look forward to Counselor Rice and moving this forward.
Thanks very much. I see Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Gibbon. I also am supportive of the tabling motion. Our administrative staff, I think, are the ultimate in finding grants, the MSI grants, and would help the gymnics association on that path with the government, because sometimes it's very, very confusing. There's quite a few levels under the dome there, so I, I'm looking forward to the tabling motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Augustus, you had a, one more, two more?
Yes, coffee time. Council, I'll move that council award, thank you, Mayor Bill Gibbon, I'll move the council award RFP-05411 for the multiplex coffee kiosk to second cup, second cup LTD for the operation of the coffee kiosks in the main hall of the multiplex.
Thank you very much, Counselor Augustus. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we have one final one. Go ahead, Counselor Augustus.
Thank you. I'll move the council approve the 2010 Arctic Winter Games Legacy Fund. In speaking to this, Debbie Reed and Francois Fournier were at committee meeting. We were very proud to have individuals like that running our volunteer organizations and looking after an event like this in Grand Prairie, and they stroked us a nice big check and gave it to me. I gave it directly to the city manager for safekeeping, and so I would encourage, encourage council to approve this motion.
Sure, thanks very much, Counselor Augustus. And just to speak really briefly to the legacy fund and what it's going to do, since I was council's rep on the Arctic Winter Games Host Society, the legacy fund, the legacy of the games is over $350,000. They were able to write us a check for $300,000. There are a few things to finalize and federal grants monies to come in, but we actually predict it will be slightly over $350,000. And the intent of the fund is to be a bid fund, a perpetual legacy that would have approximately $12,000 a year available to the community, which would be used to bid on events, and so essentially is seed money to enable community groups that wish to bring new sporting or cultural events focused on youth to the Grand Prairie community. And so it's essentially seed money and is a good return on the seed money that the City of Grand Prairie put forward to help prepare the bid in the first place. The only other thing that I'd note is that the legacy fund, because we did have regional partners, the, the legacy fund will be managed through the Pursuit of Excellence in Arts Development Committees, and of course, the County of Grand Prairie is represented on those as well. So it will be regional in nature and will be a one-stop shop when it comes to finding funds to place bid for, bids for events. So that's all that I had to present, and thanks for allowing me to do that, Counselor Augustus. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Augustus, was there anything else from that meeting?
No, that was our longest meeting in, in history, and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for everybody's time.
Any questions for Counselor Augustus? Seeing none, then we move on to items of correspondence of which we have none. Delegation business, would anybody care to make a motion? I think there was really one delegation that had a specific item of business, and maybe Counselor Rice, if I could ask if you'd be interested in forwarding the recycling information to Aqua Terra? Maybe a motion that council, would you be willing to make that motion?
I move that we forward the information received from the delegation as it relates to recycling to Aqua Terra Utilities.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Just to formalize that, any further, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and I believe other than that, the other delegation business has been dealt with earlier on in our agenda, unless there's something else that I missed. I don't believe we have any notice of motion, but council member reports, and Counselor Redburn, you said you had something for Peace Library System.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Just some highlights from our executive committee meeting of February 26th. We supported or received the draft audited financial statement for 2010. It shows a small surplus of $7,500. We're looking at financial planning for the next three years, starting in 2012, and so we're looking at a possible increase in the per capita grant from municipalities at that time, beginning in 2012. We updated our five-year capital plan. We approved the 2010 annual report for public library service that goes to the Public Library Service Branch of Alberta Municipal Fairs. It included member council satisfaction information that showed that, that basically municipal councils are very satisfied with the service, not quite as satisfied, but still reasonably satisfied with communications, and very satisfied with the system's plan of service for the next three years. And finally, we talked about the 25th, it is the 25th anniversary for the Peace Library System, and we're having an event prior to the annual conference, September 21st, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you, Mayor Gibbon.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Counselor Wong, I believe you had Wapiti Corridor Planning Group?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Gibbon. On Wednesday, March 2nd, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society held a board meeting. I'm pleased to announce that the society will be looking to book some time with community stakeholders to present the first draft of the land use plan. City council will also be asked to participate in a small group meeting to provide feedback to the draft plan. The next step is to spend the next two or three months completing this phase of stakeholder engagement meetings. The provincial government will also be consulted at this stage to ensure that the plan meets with their goals and expectations. The society is then going to be looking at developing a management plan that will accompany the land use plan. The management plan will address things like enforcement, education, communication, and implementation in the years following adoption of the plan. This is meant to be a 50-year plan, so the management plan is, is as important as the land use plan. So we can look forward to this meeting with the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society in the near future. I believe they're getting hold of our administration this week.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. And I don't believe we had any other reports, but with council's indulgence, I'll do one. At the top of our list is 2010 Arctic Winter Games Host Society Executive Committee, which I was council's rep from last term. I can inform council that we had our final meeting of the Host Society Executive last week. That's where we've closed off the society's books, and as I mentioned earlier, I think I can inform council that the legacy will be slightly over $350,000. It was previously announced at 350, and we've been waiting for the last few bills to come in. There's some federal grant monies that are paid after the books are closed off and finally submitted, and so we'll receive that, and we'll see that in the legacy fund. And then also, just in terms of the recognition of the volunteers and the Host Society Executive, two things. First, the, the, this is the first time that a host committee had ever operated so independently from their municipality, and it put forward a very clear set of books, which really outline the expectations for what the total cost is to host a society. So that's legacy number one of the games. Legacy number two, of course, is the capital legacy that's left to the city and to the community organizations. And then another legacy that the Host Society from Grand Prairie left is that the federal government has finally committed to increasing funding to the Arctic Winter Games, and so I believe they're going to increase their funding by $150,000 to the next set of games. And so unfortunately, although we can't benefit from that, I believe between just us here in the room, that that really is a legacy of the work that the volunteers did in lobbying the federal government, whose contribution had stayed the same for the previous 25 years. And so I think the case that the Grand Prairie Host Committee made for the federal government being more involved in the Arctic Winter Games is something that's going to pay off to every other community to host them. And so with that, I think we can strike the Arctic Winter Games Host Society Executive Committee from our list of committee reports, because that is finished business, and we'll move into council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Redburn. Gotcha.
Get our act together. Thank you. My fault. Just one last comment. Bill, a great update, but in terms of, in addition to that money legacy, there was a legacy of $160,000 some thousand in equipment and materials that were, that different organizations in our community received. So again, just a great job by, by the society and our whole community. February 24th, I attended the State of the City Chamber Luncheon, where Mayor Gibbon talked about our city, where we're at, and we're, and how we're planning to, to work on where we want to go. Did a great job and received many positive comments with respect to his talk, so thank you and congratulations, Mayor Gibbon. Wild Rose Villas expansion opening, I spoke as vice chair of the Grand Spirit Foundation. I was able to, to attend and speak and thank those partners for that project and speak to the, the residents, those who are, whose Wild Rose Villas is their home, and so it was a great opportunity for me. That same day, I attended the Chamber Mixer, which was at the Crystal Center, and was sponsored by the Grand Prairie Storm, and then attended the info session with the Wapiti School Board that same day. February 26th, I brought greetings at the Rural Crime Watch Meeting and Symposium, held at the Tech Center, and was able to speak and welcome everyone, and also, I guess, was able to support our crime prevention program. Dawn spoke about our youth, youth diversion project as part of the program, and the major speaker there identified or let everyone know how progressive our crime prevention programs in the city and our staff are with respect to those type of initiatives. Then I also attended the same day the Maple Sugar Festival in Musquesee Park. Couldn't take my grandchildren, but Dawn and I went and enjoyed the event and had a bit of a wagon ride together, so that was fun. February 28th, information session with the gymnics board. March 1st, Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, we meet every second month. March 3rd, Alberta Cans for Kids. The Bottle Container Management Board and Depots chose the Stallerie Children's Hospital as a recipient of their efforts, and so the Stallerie received over $100,000. And I was given the opportunity, just by chance, at that event to speak and share my personal experience with the Stallerie, which my colleagues in council know very near and dear to my heart. March 4th, tender opening, 116th paving, sand, and some engineering services for the indoor soccer boards, I guess, fix up at the Johnny Mac. And today, March 7th, had a meeting with Airport Commission CEO Brian Grant, a couple of updates and a couple of things to discuss. Thank you, Mayor Gibbon.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn and Councillor Augustin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Aside from my regularly scheduled committee meetings, I attended the Gymnics Council Information Session and the Peace Wapiti School Board Council Information Session. The State of the City Address by our, by Mayor Bill Given was very well presented and taken by the committee, by the city very, very well, extreme amount of positive comments. One guy even said it was probably the best State of the City Address ever by a very substantial member of the community. And I went to the Toby Keith concert at the Crystal Center here in Grand Prairie. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Augustin. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Again, on the 24th, I was there also. And you did a very good job. And I have heard comments also, Mayor Given, that was a very good address. Later that day, I attended the grand opening also with Councillor Radburn, the Phase Two of Wild Rose Villas, where my mom got her five-year pin. So as a 95-year-old, she was pretty happy about that. And so was I. Then later, we met four o'clock with the Peace Wapiti School Boards and discussed common concerns. I mean, one of theirs is there are a lot of busing and the cost of fuel is going up. And they've got, all their costs are pretty well set. And they were just kind of letting us know that they have some concerns too. Then again, on 26th, I also attended the annual maple sugar days at Musqueseepee Park. And I elected not to go behind some of those horses that give those gassy things. And I had the maple syrup. And I bought some maple syrup too, and my grandkids really appreciated that. On March 4th to 6th, it wasn't really city-related, but it was selling the city. The city had a great booth there, thanks to Michelle Gardner and her crew. The home show, and it was great exposure to our city. There's vendors and displayers from right across the province. And when I went around and I was kind of getting a feel how they felt about the Grand Prairie market, even though we've had, you know, some, there's some foreclosures or whatever, there's a, there's just a glimmer of optimism out there. And it's no longer a grizzly bear with a flashlight at the end of the tunnel. It's really, things are really happening out there. And we can see a little more in the oil patch. We will, our recovery hopefully will quicker than we thought. So that's everything.
Mayor Given? Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. And Councillor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I attended several of the events that have already been covered off and highlighted by my fellow councillors. However, I did attend one that wasn't mentioned, and that was the, the city's social club hosted a poker tournament about a week ago. And I attended that for a few minutes. I was quickly defeated. And that's all I've got to report on.
Thanks very much, Councillor Monroe. Councillor Rice? Sorry, Councillor Rice.
I too attended the meeting with the Gymnics. I also attended in Edmonton with AUMA for Provincial Budget Day. We saw the 2011-2014 capital plan supporting 17.6 billion in projects, which of course includes the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital. However, all other categories, schools, provincial highway network, municipal infrastructure, and other projects have been reduced. The MSI funding was increased $10 million to $836 million, but that's a 60% reduction from the $1.4 billion that was announced when the program was introduced. So for the city, this means a reduction of, from $16,732,800, roughly, down to $10,39720. So that's a fairly big hit. When it was introduced, where the city was told, go ahead and borrow with its money in the bank. And of course, Grand Prairie wasn't the only one that chose to believe that. So we were very, very fortunate that this year, it was reduced, we estimated, we thought, very conservatively, so we estimated we would get about $10,399,866. And in fact, we're getting only $10,39720. So that we're down roughly $300,000, a little about $320 or something thousand dollars, which isn't bad. It could have been a lot worse if we hadn't budgeted that responsibly. And we didn't use all of that, we didn't budget all of that for 2011 projects. So I wonder, Mayor Given, if Mr. Anderson could maybe, when are we going to address, at what point will we address, we thought we were getting this, we're really getting that?
Mr. Anderson, do you want to speak to the city's MSI position?
Mayor Given, the property tax bill is actually coming to general government services March 23, and it'll be summarized in that report.
Thank you very much.
Ask and you shall receive, I guess. Anything else, Councillor Rice?
No, I just, to just maybe point out that AUMA appreciates that the province, you know, has increased MSI funding, but they're very, very firm that we need to go forward and, and have a new partnership with the province. It's not about the money, it's, it's about a new relationship. It's a process that every year municipalities can't plan their capital projects, that, in hoping that their projects will qualify. So we've got to have a better process that municipalities can plan ahead. And that certainly will be a priority with AUMA in the upcoming year.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Councillor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Wednesday, February 23rd, Brian Glavine, our Economic Development Officer, and I met with the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Executive to discuss the city's visitor information center contract. I believe a contract will be coming forward at the next GGS meeting in about two weeks. On February 24th, I was present at the mayor's State of the City Address, as well as the Chamber Mixer at the Crystal Center. On February 25th, I had a tender opening at City Hall for the multiplexes fitness equipment. And it was pretty exciting, I'd have to say, to get a preview of all the equipment that's going in the new facility. And since I got the only sneak preview, I won't be sharing any of that information, but it's really, really cool. No, I will share some of the equipment because I think it is public information. We saw a bunch of treadmills. I believe there was about 21 in total, some that actually have a negative incline, so you can practice your downhill running as well as your uphill running. There was elliptical trainers, there were new spin bikes on order, there's kettlebells, you know, all sorts of, all sorts of new equipment that is being used to train people these days. It was really neat to see. And I look forward to the report when they actually come in and, and show us which tender was received. On the night of the 25th, I also played in the city social club fun poker tournament. And I ended up getting defeated by Bill Walker's son, Shay Walker, who won our table and ended up winning the whole tournament, actually. So congratulations to Shay. On the 26th, I was present at the Maple Sugar Festival. And it was actually the first time I ever got to try that maple taffy. And I have to say, it was pretty good. I can understand why all the kids were lining up to get a sample of that. On February 26th, I attended with the city manager and our spouses, the SPCA Academy Awards Dine and Dance fundraiser at the GPN. I had to make sure that we said, I said we invited our spouses because I didn't want people to think we went together. I don't know why. No, it was a fantastic event. It was done up amazingly. It's, it's called the Academy Awards Dine and Dance for a reason. They do spotlight celebrities at that event. And there were posters probably covering every square inch of the GPN ballroom, plus cardboard cutouts of many celebrities lining the hallway. So it was really neat to see that. I don't know what the final tally was, but I'm pretty sure they did really well at that fundraiser because all the auction items seem to go for some good dollars there. On Monday, February 28th, council met with the GP Gymnics Board, I believe that was already mentioned, as well as on March 3rd, the Beverage Container Management Board presented the check to the Stollery Children's Hospital for bottles and cans collected at Recycle Plus. And I just wanted to mention, or give kudos to Recycle Plus for offering that program at their facility. Finally, on Friday, March 4th, the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association had some governance training. It was led by Fletcher Bootle, who was on the, he's an ex-ATCO employee. He was on the Grand Prairie Regional College Board of Directors. He's also working on the governance training for Sunrise House, as well as many other community organizations. I found this to be a very informative exercise. It really leads towards strategic planning for the tourism association. It was identified that the weakest element in the association was around the ends policy, which basically defines the goals of the association and how success is measured. The reason I found this extremely interesting is because city council is going to be heading out to its own strategic planning session later this week. And it was a good warm-up in reviewing that process.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Councillor, yeah. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. February 23rd, I attended AGM Downtown Association get-together at Duke's. And I have to say, it went over quite well. And there's one thing, the city has allocated certain funds for sidewalk repairs, I believe around $100,000, which makes complete sense when you have parades and festivals happen down there and all kinds of events that the sidewalks stay maintained. On February 24th, I attended the State of the City Address where Mayor Given had a lot of great comments on. And I thought he did a really good job. And it was well done. On February 28th, council met with the gymnastics, which is a very big part in our community. If you look around our community of hockey or whatever, they raised majority of money to build that building. And $4 million out of $6 million is phenomenal. And the only reason why it was more is when the boom started and the price of steel and everything went up. So kudos to them and look forward to looking at that issue. As well, on March 1st, I went to a different committee, Community Development Committee, because the gymnastics was a big part of that one, and I wanted to hear a little bit more. And it was very involving. On February, March 4th, I went to the Francophone flag raising ceremony. And I thought, I actually was at the wrong school, St. George. I went to the wrong area. Because my children are going to be going through all bilingual school. And I consider myself pure Elliot Trudeau, I have one class a week, Dean, to make me bilingual. And I hope my children will become bilingual. And I'm hoping, the only other, I missed the Maple Sugar Festival and I wish I was at previous ones. I wish I would have been there. And I hope that Councillor Rice with AUMA hits us hard in MSI funding. Because for infrastructure, we're on the same par as for St. John, and we're 40,000 more people. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. So to just quickly go through, because the number of the events that I attended have been previously mentioned. On Wednesday the 23rd, I was at the Downtown Association AGM. On the 24th, I was presenting the State of the City Address. And thank you very much to all the council members for their kind compliments. I really appreciate that. And thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting that day. Later that afternoon, I also went to the meeting with the Peace Wapiti School Board. Saturday the 26th, I was at the Maple Sugar Festival. Monday the 28th, I was here with council members and whereas we met with the GP Gymnics Board. Tuesday the 1st, I was at my final Arctic Winter Games Executive Committee meeting, as I mentioned earlier. Wednesday the 2nd, I participated in signing the National Volunteer Week proclamation here at City Hall. Thursday the 3rd, I was also at the Alberta Cans for Kids presentation. And again, my thanks and congratulations to the folks at Recycle Plus and their team who were able to, through the program, were able to raise with our community over, I believe, over $6,000, nearly $7,000. And so it was my pleasure to be able to present the check to the Stollery Foundation, essentially on behalf of the community. And appreciated being able to be joined by other council members there for that. On Friday the 4th, I went to Derek Taylor's school to speak to Ms. Dietrich's grade six class about local government. And that's always one of the highlights. They asked me what the highlights of my job were. And, and it was with no ounce of, no ounce of, well, yeah, patronage or guile is the word that came to mind, which is, but that I told them that I was actually attending at schools like that. And to be able to speak with kids about the importance of local government. I think for a long time, the school curriculum really focused on federal government and provincial governments. And oftentimes, I think, I think it's actually no question that local government is the one that has the most direct impact on people's lives. And so to be able to share that perspective with kids early on, and hopefully encourage them to get involved, is a real, that is a real treat. And I have to say that since then, I've received four emails and about five Facebook friendings from kids in the grade six class, and a lot of them with questions about how the city operates. So I really appreciate that. Also, on the 4th, I went to Cole Nouveau Frontier for the Franco Albertan Flag Raising that was mentioned earlier. And today, here at City Hall, I was on hand as we welcomed two new partners to the multiplex, as ATCO Gas and ATCO Electric came on with a grant towards the capital campaign of $25,000. And so with the success of passing the motion for the coffee kiosk and that donation today from ATCO Gas and ATCO Electric, we've welcomed two new partners to the multiplex. And it's a pleasure to see them. And hopefully, we'll see more members of our community as partners in the multiplex through our big picture campaign, which we watched, which we launched a little while ago. And with that, and if there was nothing else, I'd call our meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thanks very much, everybody.